Call the meeting to order.
You want it?
Stand for pledge.
I want you to make a pledge of the life of the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our government, indivisible, and in the visible of the earth, in the universe, as one.
Roll call.
Road Commissioner Calhoun is absent. Drain Commissioner Christensen.
Present.
Road Commissioner Uckerly.
Present.
Road Commissioner Joyce.
Present.
Road Commissioner Mikowski is absent. Road Commissioner Popa.
Present.
Agenda additions and additions.
I have one that I'd like to consider. Under old business, could we have a brief update on our dam inspections where we're at?
Move to accept as amended.
Call second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approval of the agenda. I don't see any issues.
That was it.
That was it, okay. Public comment, first of two. Crickets. Approval of minutes, organizational session and regular session meeting April 18th. I did not see anything in those minutes.
Under organization one, I read it all. I didn't see anything.
Move to accept the minutes from the organizational and the regular meeting on April 18th.
So move.
I'll second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Communication items. Seeing none. Old business. Looks like we're gonna talk about the dam inspection. John?
Yeah. Steve, can you give us an update? We had two inspections. Could you tell us?
The underwater, did that happen last week? And then Spicer's gonna do the overall inspection. It's a three-year inspection. They have affirmed that they wouldn't do that.
Good enough.
I knew you were on the ocean someplace, but I got done. I'm sorry about that.
So they were able to do it now?
Beautiful day. Perfect. Up and down the road. They took two divers. They're supposed to get the stuff back to you sometime.
All right. Wonder where we're at?
I don't know.
Turn around on the info probably a month or something?
Six years ago.
Sounds good.
New business. First of three flooding issues in control room.
I think everybody got a packet. In the last meeting, if I can jump in, Bob.
Yes.
We approved Page four motion by Christensen to accept the estimate from machine engineer, machine, should I say that right?
Yes, that's fine.
Machine. Machine engineering for the discovery phase, no more than 1650. In the amount needs to go to the board commissioners if it will be taken, seconded by Joyce. So that went forward. So part of what you'll hear from Pat is the discovery of what he found with respect to that. And then there's a new issue of the flooding. So I think we could probably turn it over. And if you want to come on up to the table and kind of lead us through the two correspondences that we had, plus the photo piece, and then we can get our head wrapped around what it is that we're looking at here.
Sure. I guess the first item would be the report that you had mentioned that we were contracted to provide.
In the microphone, you should probably state your name and stuff for the record.
It'll pick up. Sure. Pat Machen from machine engineering. And general discussion on the OSHA research and findings that we have in turn in the report dated July 19th of this year. The report basically is organized in just a general discussion on, there's two individuals, myself and then Jim Coghlan from our firm, that had reached out. Jim had actually done the discussion, completed discussions with the OSHA representative. It took about a month to get a tack, to get in touch with him because he was out of town apparently on a very extended stay. The general discussion was is worker safety. OSHA has some very specific requirements for worker safety. However, it's not necessarily specific to the exact application to a dam with gates that have operations. But really what it comes down to is in general, if a worker has to be in the vicinity of something, then there's kind of a pattern of effect that has to be reviewed. And that pattern of effect really is, so you have to get out there and maintain those trunnion pins for the gates so that they'd be able to operate in, for greasing, is to require a greasing system so that someone can do that remotely without having to go out there and make access. The remote greasing system is something that is installed in all levels of dams. A lot of times it's installed because you can't get access to some of these larger dams with trunnion pins that are out 60 feet away from walkway and over 100 feet off the ground. So this is not like that, but it's a similar practical system in that a worker would not have to go out on a dam in order to grease these trunnion pins. You do it all from the control room. Secondarily, there's another portion to this that is an interlock to prevent the system from actually operating in the event of a failure. In the event of a failure of the hydraulic rams that support the gate, if, for instance, we lock them off, shut valves off so that basically shut off any pressure loss, if a worker is out there, the gate can then operate if there is a loss in pressure, a line breaks or something of that nature. So the way that OSHA, and I included in here the actual requirements and state, the way that OSHA responds to that request and the way that the inspector did, is that we should have some sort of a mechanical interlock. We can't have cables or chains or anything like that. It's kind of like, probably the best way to state that is you open up a chest, a top, and there's a chain that prevents it from going too far. OSHA doesn't, they don't allow to have those types of devices. It has to be something that is hard and physical and mechanical. In that regard, it was talked about, kind of like a winch, basically. Some sort of geared interlock that it ratchets as it opens, and then it's always, it's always interlocked so that way if the motion stops, the interlock is engaged and it doesn't allow it to go in the opposite direction that the motion is needed. Basically, OSHA says when interlocks, when used, interlocks shall be installed to minimize the possibility of accidental operation or tampering. But it more or less goes in regard to when a worker is out on the dam and actually physically completing some sort of maintenance activity. That is the reason for the requirement, as we stated in here, for that interlock. The next thing that was brought up to us, and this was after a site visit that we did, and the next thing that was brought up to us is the concern for possible flooding inside of the room if the site blast happens to break, whether the valve breaks off or some damage happens and it's due to flooding. Not necessarily, it doesn't have to be when a worker is actually in the room, but it happens to be when maybe it happens overnight. We did some broad brush calculations and it takes probably about an hour to fill that room if that three-inch line happened to break.
Six feet to the 67 foot depth outside.
Yeah, to the depth of the water outside. And then the other concern that was mentioned in here, just because it was mentioned in kind of tandem when we're completing this report, was the flooding issues inside of the control room. There's a mention, there's a couple of pictures in the report, but basically there's a couple inches of water inside of the entrance into that which used to be the old spillway, but also into the room itself. Some of the discussion that we have in here is putting in a cutoff wall which prevents the lake water from actually rising into that spillway area and flooding it. And then if water happens to get in there and goes in the control room, however that may be, may be installing some sort of a pump system inside of the control room, some sort of sump pump system. In general, those are the, I guess, the conclusions that we made inside of this report. Any questions on any of that?
Yeah, and that, you said it's either hydraulically or turns or whatever. Is that done automatically or does somebody have to volunteer to do that?
So if it's an interlock and we're, and the system is actually, someone's gonna go out there and, let's say, be in the way of the gate leaf, let's just say. The thought is, is that they would engage before they do that. It's called a lockout procedure, basically. It's no different than if you go into a hazardous scenario, you basically go through a system of checks and you would put that particular system in a lockout. So when it's operating, you engage a lock, basically. It allows you to have the correct direction of motion on it, but doesn't allow it to go backwards, basically. And I guess the main key out there is if the gate, let's say it's closed and a worker is out there, it prevents that gate from actually opening and then slamming either on the individual or the water rushing over and washing out the individual. Can I say that correctly?
Please.
Okay.
Of course, we maintain by greasing those points, bearing points on the dam, but at some point in time, there's a seal on each side of that gate that will wear and at some point have to be replaced. And there is a system that is designed to hold off the water so we can do that. And then with a disc in place, it'll keep the gate from falling down while that's happening. So there is future maintenance where this would be an important thing to have happen. The other thing is that we need to do some maintenance now. We've talked about it a little bit. The pins that are on the ends of the hydraulic rams.
Transducer pins?
Have a sensor in them, and they sense how many pounds of pressure are being held. And when those are functioning, you can see that they're very similar. This cylinder and this cylinder are very similar. So that lets you know that both cylinders are active. And if one were different than the other, then you know, one of those cylinders has a problem, so we have to fix it. Right now, one of the sensors is non-functional. So we have to have the interlock in place so we can disconnect the hydraulics and replace those pins so we have our sensors back. So that's something that we have to do now. So we're going through this process to have that safety in place so we can do some maintenance on our dam. So that's kind of where we are with that interlock safety thing and doing some maintenance. The flooding is new. Lake Michigan came up. And basically, in my mind, we're gonna be something like the Dutch. We're gonna do a little baby dike and keep that water out, and if some does happen to get in, we'll pump it. And it's similar to New Orleans. It's similar to thousands of places on God's green earth where the water comes in and they gotta pump it. So we're in a situation that I didn't anticipate, and I don't think Jerry did either, where we have water in the control room, which, you know, we have electronics in there, it's a controlled environment. We heat it, we cool it, we dehumidify it. So the computer works right, so the dam works right. So having water in the control room is something that we can't have. So that's the other aspect of what this report shows us.
John?
Pat, now, you're just summarizing what we hired you for here a few months ago to do, look at the situation compared to OSHA and then what has to be done. You're not getting into the part now of what you think has to be done, or is that all open in this?
Right. I mean, we've given you, we've given you-
Given us what has to be done per OSHA and this and that.
Right. And we've given you a brief description in here without going into a lot of design development and that in details.
And that's gonna come up with your design proposal.
That is the following portion of that, yes. So this was the overall research, what are we gonna need to do, not the soup to nuts kind of thing.
Fellow members, I spent about 45 minutes on the phone with Pat the other day, and I went over all that. And he was pretty thorough in what he looked at. He talked about some future needs downstream. That is one reason we need to have these interlocks too for future dam inspections, correct? Because you have to walk in front of that face and all this kind of stuff.
So there's an example on a, on a radio gate system. It's, this is a leaf system, so basically it just flows, goes up and down. On a radio gate system, you have, on a large system, you have hydraulics that actually winch the gate upward and then lower it down by gravity. You have, you always have a mechanism that you can lock that gate in a position by dogging it off. And that is a physical plate, physical adapter that goes in there and then supports it. So if that hydraulic or that winch ever fails, that that gate will not operate in a reverse direction. So it's very similar to that, so this is a pretty normal thing to have.
We talked about, when I talked to him on the phone, we talked about a wall, we talked about the sump, which I hope you're gonna get into with your proposal and stuff. And I talked a little bit with him on this break in that, in that tube and stuff, and I won't go into that now because I'm not sure that's as big as stairs we need because we can operate with those valves shut off, I think. But you can come up on that when you, when you get to it. But what you did for us, I'm pleased. You looked at everything and said, hey, we found this and we found that. That's all I have for now until he comes to his proposal.
So might as well do it with the next, the next document, I would imagine.
So the next document is our, our proposal. This was in their discussion when we were originally proposing on the study phase of it, that we would study this and then have enough information that we would then be able to give you a concise proposal, knowing what we would need to do. So it was kind of like a front end and engagement, so we completed that, and now we have the actual design proposal. And in front of you is a proposal. The proposal includes the design of the greasing system. It also includes the design of that mechanical interlock, as well as the new issues with these, with the emergency flooding issues that has recently come up. So I guess in general, our focus on this proposal is to develop the design, generate contract documents, which includes drawings, specifications, all that that's needed to select, to solicit a contractor and then have a contractor then build it according to the plan. Also too, is then to follow up during construction with field visits and any monitoring that we need to do and just in general, make sure that they do everything that they're supposed to, contractor.
A little background, maybe. The county hired Pat and his company a while back to do engineering work for the county. It seems like the situations where an engineering firm is needed, those seem to be popping up like mushrooms. So many different things around the complex. We have a need to have an engineering firm look at so that we get an independent set of eyeballs other than someone that's trying to sell us something. So we went through the vetting process and Pat and his firm were hired as to be that entity. So having been already hired to do engineering work of this nature, that's why he's sitting in front of us making this proposal, and that's why we're looking at it and we're in a position to discuss it, rather than going out to bids for this piece of what's going on. Once the engineering's in place and all those drawings are here, then we have something we can go out to bids with for an actual contractor to come and do the work. His company will be providing those documents and that design work because we have already chosen his company to do that type of thing for us. So we went through that first phase to get him in front of us and to be able to hand this to us, and now that's why we are looking at this proposal that's in front of us. We don't have to go out to bids for this work that he's gonna do for us.
Go ahead, John.
Pat and I spent some time on this, also on the phone. This is probably our longest time. So first thing, members, that drew my attention was that discovery phase. And I said, oh boy, three grand to do what? And if you look under A3, that discovery phase, A21, or A21 is okay, we can get those prints in no time. A22, what this is really good about is, is Pat's gonna go down there with a 3D laser and do that whole room and that whole foundation and stuff so that they can go back on their computer and make one of these 3D models of the whole thing. That is what I thought I found interesting, and I agreed with Pat on that price. That's a, the question I have there, is that gonna be ours when we're done?
Yeah, you'll have a model. The way that the models are transferred is that you have to have specific software. So it's more of a sharing utility. So we would basically share a link. I've been told it's out there for perpetuity, but who knows in this day and age with electronics?
We're not gonna get a disk or a drive that if someone has that program, I can come back to your company and do it or what?
You certainly can have that. Yes, absolutely. It's, it requires a specific 3D modeling. The way that we've done this before is that, for instance, we've emailed a link, and then when you open that link, it asks you then to monitor or to view it on the web. So then it goes through a portal through the software and then you can visualize-
I doubt if we'll ever do that. None of us here will do it, whatever.
The cool thing is, is that every particular, every single point in there, which is a pixel, is a data point. Gives you X, Y, and Z coordinate in there. We've done the same thing for a dam down in Texas where we actually scanned between a 50-foot gate. We're 100 foot over the ground. We dangled this thing over the platform and shot lots of locations, stitched it all together, and we were able to verify. We were, in this particular instance, we were 5,000ths of an inch off what the surveyor was measuring it. So that kind of accuracy is what we need in order to design this thing applicably.
And, and that's what Pat had told me on the phone. That engineering design phase, I think, is very, very, very valuable, especially with that 3D model. The construction administration, I thought that was pretty good. The only thing, what if we asked you to draw up our bid documents and stuff? Because I'm not sure our office or us people here, what do you think it would cost to draw up our bid documents for us? Because you're gonna have prints, you're gonna have this, you're gonna have the bidder do this, do that, meet them on site. None of us are gonna be able to help the guy other than maybe Jerry, but what do you think that would cost?
I mean, we would throw that in for nothing for no additional cost. And the reason why I say that, because it helps us to also provide you with a vetting process for the contractors by being engaged.
Thank you.
One thing is, is that I only see that we would be able to do on this, for instance, is to come up with a bid tab, so all the items that they would then propose against, and then provide descriptions on what's included in that. I like to be involved with that anyway because it's kind of like a full circle of review for us too, because sometimes we end up finding things that we maybe missed on the plans that we had developed in the, in the descriptions for the bidding and also working with the contractor. This is a very intimate kind of design. It would be really good to be involved with that in a bid process. Normally, the county has come up with their own advertisement and their own contracts, so we wouldn't be providing any of that. But we would provide basically the background information in order to bid this.
So your, your company would draft up the RFQ or the RFP, whichever, or no?
Yeah, so we call it an advertisement for bids. Yeah, and, and we've reviewed it in the past. So county's drawn it up, and then we've reviewed it to make sure it includes what's required.
But it might refer to your attachments and prints and all this kind of stuff, right?
Oh, absolutely. You would still have to have a bid tab. We wouldn't want to do this in one lump sum and say, give us a price for this. We'd want to break it out so that we know what the order magnitude is for each of the items. And then also, we would then be involved, whether this is a mandatory bid walkthrough, I would think that anybody bidding on this would want to walk through it. I know it was really helpful for me to be out there, and I can only imagine what it would be for a contractor too. We would want to be involved in that anyway, so. And there would be no additional cost in this proposal.
So when it says, does not include the bidding services, if we give your contract, you're gonna say it does include the bidding services?
I would say it does include bidding services.
That's it.
And then I would, I would go ahead and break that out, what we would include.
That's in item C2, item two.
Other clarifications.
Thank you though for that.
Yeah. Thank you.
When we go in front of the county board, the hot pieces that's, as regard to flooding and a relatively large portion of the cost from the contractor will be a surprise for the county board. What we're gonna need is kind of a wild guess ballpark. We need to, we need to be somewhere in the range of where we're gonna be to do the construction on this. We can see your number, which will also be a surprise for them. I think we can walk them through that like we have here. However, the cost of doing it is gonna be something they're gonna have to decide on how, when, where to pay, that kind of thing. So are you in a position to give us a, or you have to kind of, within the next few days, give us a general ballpark?
I would want to think about it, because I wouldn't want to give you a number that's low. You know what I mean?
Exactly.
I would want to be, I'd want to hold it to a reasonable expectation. Maybe perhaps it's more of an order of magnitude estimate? But I would have to make some phone calls to see what-
That's what we need. Chet, when do we, we need that by?
Well, you want us on August agenda?
I believe that we appropriate.
The August board meeting is August 13th, so we do it by the 6th, which is next week.
But Chet, in August, we have to take this proposal through and hire. And they have to have something say, here's what our message is for us tomorrow.
And how much of this is being funded by the lake association? Board members already are asking the question, because they know nothing about this. We just spent 3.5 million, we'll tomorrow for this building. We spend 1.3 for the roof and its door. We're going out for a bomb to paper this, so cash is tight. So this is gonna be a tough settlement for them.
Right.
And they want as much permission we can provide beforehand, it'd be helpful. This permission package is very well done, but obviously if this is a major ticket item that no one planned for, no one budgeted for, and no one told the board this is coming.
August, they're gonna ask them to approve Patrick's engineering stuff to get all this stuff prepared. And he's gonna maybe give up-
They're just not know what is the total cost of the project.
Yeah, it's a two, it's a two-stage, you're right, John. It's a two-stage process, and the engineering work has to be done no matter what, and I think that's something that we could swallow possibly.
We can do that this year. This construction might take place till next year, we don't know.
Well-
Well, that's a, that's a confirmation that I'll need to have prior to the board meeting.
Right, and I think, I think that engineering work is a certain number. We have that number in front of us. And, and if, if we get water in, in before that door and it freezes over the winter, Jerry can't get in the room. So there's a certain timeframe where the work should be done, if it can get done in that quick fashion, who knows? However, the cost of doing it is the big number, and what Chet's referring to- However, the cost of doing it is the big number, and what Chet's referring to is the Special Assessment District, which is in place for the riparians on the lake. When we've had a big project, the two big projects of repair and redo of the dam were so large that county paid half and the riparians paid the other half. Those were three-quarters of a million to a million-dollar projects, and John, I kind of jumped in in front of you, but...
You know, just one clarification again. Is the Special Assessment District set up as under the guise of the lake level statute, or is it just under special assessments?
I have that question into Michelle.
I can answer that. I checked on it here a few weeks ago. That district is still set up, it's permanent. We used it to build the dam, but that Special Assessment District is still set up in the county.
So it would be under the lake leveling?
It's not called Lake Level and Dam Building Special Assessment, but they set up a district. We taxed everybody to build the dam and take care of it, but we could tax people again or keep a revolving fund going. It's expensive to tax if you do it at one time. But we check with both our legal people upstairs and, I don't know if I went through Michelle, I went through equalization. Anyway, the assessment district is set up and have a letter and all that.
I say because since the last time you've used it, we've had a significant amount of growth in that district, so the district would have to be recalculated.
You're right. As they go through it, each township then has to furnish the county with the property owners and their names, see if there was ever a lot split, and then that township does it. It costs a little bit for each township to do that, and once that record was set, then we went and did it. And yes, there is changes.
But this body is choosing to go to the board of commissioners for funding rather than doing it themselves? That's the direction you're going?
I'm not sure that the dam authority has the trigger. I think that's your question. The question is, how is this set up? Is it set up as a pure Special Assessment District? Or is it set up as a Special Assessment District through the legal lake level statute? So that's my question, that was my question to Michelle, and she's gone for a few days right now, and she's gonna work with Chet.
She'll be back next week.
Yeah, she's gonna work with Chet and legal counsel, probably you too, John, try to figure out who has the trigger. When we did this the last time, it was basically the same group and a dam authority. I don't recall me having the trigger as the drain commissioner, and I don't know who has the trigger. In other words, who has the authority to move forward with a special assessment, number one? And number two, how much does it cost the county to actually do that? If it costs us $75,000 and we go for $100,000 from the Special Assessment District, we're starting to say, oh, we should have done it the other way, dollars and cents. So she's gonna try to figure that out with Chet and John, try to figure out, you know, who is the trigger? How much does it cost the county to do it? How much? Pat's gonna give us a ballpark so we can see what the number is. So at a certain point, the county would probably say, let's just pay for this. At a certain point, the county would probably say, well, let's send this, you know, special assessment, or maybe we do half, special assessment does half, like they did before. So they have some decisions to make, but not all the parts and pieces are in place at this point.
Well, I know the board, and Steve does have the right. They're gonna have those questions, they already asking, they know what they do about this. Some commissioners are saying, why this is a county issue, this should be paid for by the Lake Association. So that question's gonna come up. Steve's right, the legal process of doing it, but also they're gonna know, they want to know exactly how much the project has been cost. Give us almost $20,000 just for the study, how much is the whole project gonna cost? Can it be split up into sections and phases? So John, well, no, funds this year are extremely tight, and this was not on anyone's radar. So we are going for a special bond tomorrow to pay for this project, which is a cash flow. So to get the board to commit to this money without any planning, without knowing about it, is not gonna be an easy sell. So you have to come in there well-prepared. Couple of board members are saying they want you to do the research and do the research and be prepared prior to them making a decision. That's the job of the dam authority. An old time is a crunch, but if you want this done in August, you could have those questions answered prior coming to board meeting. So they're gonna come back and say, do the research, then come back.
Do what research?
On all these questions. You are the dam authority.
Well, the questions I outlined just now.
Yeah.
I think, I think I got them. I think, I think those are the questions.
Those are the questions.
Yeah. So Pat's gonna provide some information, that takes care of one question. Hopefully, Michelle, working with John and Chet, can come up with answers to the other questions.
But some commissioners are saying, and I understand their point of this, this is a Lake Association issue, this is not a county issue. The other question is, we have a dam authority, you should be doing all the work, doing the research, that's why we have a dam authority. Come back with a final report with all the specific details in it.
One point there, this Lake Association on Lake Illinois is not like Glen Lakes. Fewer members percentage-wise and not as many resources. The Lake Associations, neither one of them have 100% membership. It's a voluntary membership thing. So it could be, what I would categorize as a high interest for the Lake Association. They don't have really the means to, or the legal or anything to be doing this kind of thing. It's really the dam authority and the county. Luckily, there is an assessment district set up, and we just have to find out where the trigger is and how it got implemented last time.
Furthermore, on the budget, I mean, current, the dam authority gets $81 million to operate. One statute reads that it's up to $10,000 that can be transferred from county to the dam authority for operations. But beyond that, it falls on the RUs. Well, granted, I'm not an attorney, so I'm just questioning, as you stated, whether or not you can absorb some of this preliminary stuff and then be able to better determine what we're really asking the county board to commit to.
Yeah, John, right, you need to have a draft plan in place and do as much research as possible beforehand. Because the amount the board's not gonna, they're gonna just say, come back to us with all these answers.
Pat, for this meeting in August, can you have a real quick PowerPoint of these pictures that show the...
Well, we have a poll, we've got a screen, that would have to print that.
Right.
That would be right now.
Yeah, something that you can just, because a commissioner is gonna say, what's the flooding? You'll have a flooding picture.
Yeah.
What's this thing on the controls you gotta have so that Jerry can work on it? You gotta build a chain here and lock the thing.
I'd be more happy to explain that.
Yeah.
Pictures of the, yeah, so. Do you have any pictures of the perch on the floor?
Yeah, I envision it being a two-piece thing. The engineering work, in my mind, has to be done ASAP, no matter what.
Right.
That's this proposal that's in front of us, and that's something that we can discuss and do a motion on at this meeting. The other aspect, the actual construction of it, is kind of an unknown right now, and Pat's gonna have to put a, get us to the ballpark on that. And that's really the nut, the big nut that the board's gonna have to try to figure out. Not that, not that this proposal is nothing, but this is something that's in writing, and it's something we can wrap our hands around. The other thing, we can't quite yet.
But I see what Chet's saying, too. I mean, there's a lot of unanswered questions, and the board, you know, if they don't feel they have adequate information, it's gonna be discarded, you know?
Well, it'll move to the next month, so as much as we can get for this meeting, the better.
You need to have it for next Tuesday.
And Michelle will be back later in the week?
No, not tomorrow.
When?
I think Monday.
Monday?
I've gone through all my records, I have nothing of equalization, nothing as far as the original documents.
As to, as to who has, who has the trigger?
Well, it's the original legal documents or financial documents on those that show projects, we don't have anything to reference to.
I'd be glad to call legal counsel, I'd like one of you to be part of the process of the specific information. If you want, one of you work with me, the civil council, John, I, and one of you members to at least answer the legal question.
Yeah, because the most recent data I have is a 2005 document of the Special Assessment District, which was not gonna be helped.
No, you, you have the nuts and bolts piece, the money is flowing in under that account.
Yeah.
But you don't have the front end as to who pulled the trigger and who had the authority to do this.
I believe you could have some public hearings, and it's not an easy, simple process.
Yeah, and I, yeah.
And one of the things that you could do, considering that there's an emergency, relatively emergency component to this, is that you could separate that and then just get that portion out for bids. And, I mean, that is a portion that should be addressed.
The flooding, the flooding.
The flooding, yes, because it's, there's a couple of things. Ice, you know, freezing it over, and then also with an operator working in an electrical environment. So that's a portion that could be separated out.
Right now, I've, I've got five-gallon pails of hydraulic oil in there that I have to make the, you know, change out, but I'm using those to, when I'm working on the electrical board, I step on the buckets, so I'm standing in the buckets. So I'm not standing in the water, even though I have rubber boots on, I just don't like to be handling the electronic board at the same time, so I just...
I think that might be...
We've got about two, excuse me, two inches on average, inch and a half, two inches inside the control room, and they give them time. And pictures show here, we've got maybe a good three inches of water coming in, but I don't know what's, none of us know what's gonna happen this fall with west, northwest winds. Steve and I talked about that, and it's like...
I think, I think Pat brings a good point. Maybe it's something that we just flew forward with the emergency portion of it. Because after all, that's what we're talking about, is health, safety, and welfare of the employee. I mean, do I think that these other things need to be addressed? Absolutely, but in the same token, what's crucial?
So when Pat does the numbers, maybe they're split out a little bit?
There's, there's a few ways to go about this. One of the things is just completely remove it and the rest of the consideration. The other portion is, is separate that out in any kind of bidding and let the contractor know this is the emergent portion that needs to be completed, can sign the cost for that, can assign a portion of general conditions to that, and then you have that, that amount, which is gonna, should be substantially less than the other work that's required, because the other work is fabrication work, and that's costly.
Still do all this, you're...
I still would recommend to do all of this, but you have the emergent thing, which includes concrete, some plumbing, and some...
Accessibility.
Yeah.
And that could be done, you could do this, here's what it's gonna take to fabricate this OSHA thing, and here's what it's gonna take to put this barrier in with the cement.
All the material down there is gonna be big.
And we can do that when we go out for bids if we have to.
Probably.
Correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like we're gonna have play health to get everything taken care of, and we need to by Tuesday, especially if Michelle's gone through Monday. Well, I mean, like Chet said, unless, unless, I don't know if you would want to listen to legal with Chet to see, but I don't know, I can't see where that's gonna...
Monday, I can find those assessment things, because I just had them out last month on how we set up that whole Special Assessment District, and I gave them to, what you call it, in Costa Hall. And I can have them Monday, and I can come in and see you Monday sometimes, Chet, or something, I don't know.
Well, it's still gonna be giving the congressmen to get that issue cleared out, because that's a huge issue.
Well, when we're done, we can go to equalization and see if she has that piece of paper I gave her that talks about that special assessment. Is that material looking?
No, we need a legal definition of how this has to take place, step by step, by step.
Somebody, somebody had the legal authority to pull the trigger on this Special Assessment District, and...
And was the profit, was the expense?
In '05, it happened, and...
Steve, would you be willing to go?
Sure. I'll, I'll bird dog it. I think we could, I move that we offered the county board of commissioners the recommendation to accept the engineering work bid from machine engineering.
Per letter dated July 22nd?
Correct. That's, that's the only piece that they might be able to move on next week, and with the proper information.
With the clarification that it will include bidding services.
So the motion's been made, has it been seconded?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So Chet, I think that's the only piece that we could reasonably...
Well, that's like getting any legal clarification, too. That and Pat will give us a ballpark number, what's possible. But like I said, the time this week, tomorrow, if possible, we're gonna today with John, I, and you, Steve, if you're available.
If, if you were to throw a noose around one of those guys right now so they wouldn't leave for lunch, we could do it immediately after the meeting?
I can call and see if they're even available.
The first try, and then tomorrow's good, not good, but good.
If you can't do it today, what time?
Eleven, eleven would be good. Just get my crew thinking.
I'll call right now.
Do we need a motion that Steve is gonna handle this with Chet? Is John?
Consensus?
I think we need a motion because it's...
We can make one, I mean, but...
Wouldn't hurt, never hurts to have extra motions.
I'll entertain a motion.
If I was to make that motion that Steve handles this, they're working together, and that we accept what they, he kind of decided?
I'll second it.
For, for, for Phase 1 going into this?
So motion's been made, seconded by Greg? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that's it for day business? Public comment?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we gotta talk about the pins. What has to be discussed about this pin replacement?
I think we touched on it.
We already touched on it.
I think we touched on it.
Transducer pin?
Yeah. I think we touched on it a little bit.
In the rant to come down to the arms on those pictures, the transducer pin, one is, as you look at that picture, the one on the left, closest to the walkway is, not reading right, but that's where this mechanism to support those arms or to make it safe so we can disconnect, okay, and change out that pin to the tune of about $1,700 a pin, is what they cost. But we'd have to support it at the ceiling like we did before, retract the gate, meaning bring it up, and, you know, it's, the pin works, okay? It's not, but for sending the signal, it does not work. Okay, the pin is still doing what it's supposed to.
So you're saying it's electronic?
It's an electronic situation, the only way to fix it is to replace the pin, and if we're doing one, we should probably do both or consider it, or just take care of the one. But we don't have a mechanism, a safety mechanism, that should be in play to do that.
You're asking for approval to buy a pin or pins, and then once a safety mechanism gets put in, you can change them out?
That's correct. We could do that, we could do it now, we can do that later after we see where we're at. But it's working now, meaning the pin supporting, we're supposed to... But it's working now, meaning the pin's supporting what's supposed to do, just at the electronics inside it harbor, transducer pin works.
The pins are available?
Yes, well, the last cost was around seventeen to buy one.
The last pin cost seventeen hundred dollars?
Per pin.
Do you need our approval to buy one?
No.
I think we should wait until.
Wait, see what's going on.
We can't do anything with those pins until safety's replaced.
Yeah, until such time. I'll check more into it, because this was six, eight months ago.
So you don't need any action now on these pins?
No, sir, but just be aware.
To store it.
It's like the roof of the thing, too, you know? We've got all that stuff in the back room. The water's the biggest issue, Steve said.
You ready for the next item?
Sure.
The next item on the agenda is a per diem policy. Michelle sent this to me because they said this dam authority and also the BPW doesn't have a policy. So this is the board policy. On page one, it says that all authority member, members and commissioner, other than commissioners, you have to have something from the board that says that you can pay a per diem. And right now, this doesn't have it. The last page of this little handout, I drew up a separate little motion that says the dam authority requests that the board of commissioners, this is something that we should have on this authority, and it's something that we should have on the BPW authority. And so I have a motion that says that any member can get a per diem when you go to board of commissioner meetings or other township meetings, which happens every once in a while. It's gonna happen next Tuesday if we go in front of the board. But Michelle said we just need something from this board that says that we pay per diems. Look at this is, so my recommendation is that we adopt this motion. Other commissions and stuff have it, but this one doesn't. If there's any questions, I make a motion as per written that we request that the Lenoir County Board of Commissioners authorize dam authority members to receive mileage and per diem to attend meetings that pertain to the dam authority, including meetings with the board of commissioners and governmental townships. That's the only two.
As directed by the dam authority, as directed to meetings, to meetings as directed by the dam authority.
You'd like to change your word there?
I just, I would add a statement, I think. To, to meetings as directed by the dam authority. In other words, the meetings that we as individuals would go to and get per diem and mileage would be meetings that this group know and want you to go to. In other words, the individual wouldn't just choose to go to a meeting and then charge per diem without this board's knowledge that that was a meeting that needed to be gone to by one of us.
You're saying ahead of time?
Ahead of time. So, I mean, individually, we can't just go to seven different places in the county and say, oh, I'm representing the dam authority individually without the board's knowledge. I think there should be a listing of meetings that need to be attended by someone or should be attended by someone. Or maybe, maybe, John, you think, you know, gosh, I think I should go and represent the dam authority at such and such a meeting in front of this board, and this board says that's a great idea. Or it's already on a list that we've given, you know, this authority has given.
Well, I thought it would be including meetings with board of commissioners and governmental townships that pertain to the dam. For example, we only met seven months ago. Well, in the meantime, I got a call from the county commissioners, can you come up there and talk about the flow that's going through the Narrows? We'd like you. So I had to put on a presentation, do that. We can't call a meeting of us to approve me to go do that.
No, no, but see, it already says board of commissioners.
Correct.
On here.
That's what I put it.
And then governmental townships, assuming that that would be a request from the township to have information.
You can put that in.
So we've got commissioners, and we've got board of commissioners, and we've got governmental townships. So those are, those are, those are the ones.
And shouldn't there be something, if they're asking for this information, that I should go to all of us, not just one person that they're requesting information?
That leads to go to you.
Absolutely.
Should we say requests? Should we say requests? That pertain to request to the dam?
That is okayed by the chair.
Approved by the chair and approved by chair?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I like that, too.
I like that.
As directed, to mean he's as directed by the dam authority and approved by chair?
Yes. That pertain to the dam authority, including meetings approved by the chair, because I don't think we know what medium we gotta come to.
Right.
I like what Tom said. I like the chair approving it.
Can you wordsmith the addition, please?
I would say everything that pertain to the dam authority, including meetings with board of commissioners and government townships with prior approval by the chair.
Okay. Allison, did you get it?
I haven't read one of them, please, to confirm.
Okay, John, right at the very end, tell me what you just said, from the period at the end of townships.
To attend meetings that pertain to the dam authority, including meetings with the board of commissioners and governmental townships with prior approval from the chair. Think so? That'll fly. This way, one guy isn't doing it.
So I think it's right at the end, that's just with prior approval of the chair is right. So everything goes through the chair?
Yes.
That's how much I can best do.
Okay, I made that motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment? Second two.
Eric Lynn, Suttons Bay Township. I'm surprised that no one's here today from the lake association.
From what?
From the lake association. I find that interesting. Are you a member? Oh, okay. Because usually Wayne's here and the president, forget his name.
We have a new president.
Oh, do you? Okay. Is it you? Anyway, just my observation.
I'll report, though, at our next lake association meeting, what took place today.
Okay.
John?
John, county treasurer, just internal discussion that may be with this board is with the current allocation of your budget, what you can contribute towards proposed study, and if there is any fund balance, what will be allocated towards that. If the board decides to ask that question, is what you are willing or able to spend for this project, the remainder come from the board to give this project additional consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none. Authority member comment? Greg?
I don't have anything.
I just, thanks for the advice, John. I appreciate it.
Tomorrow, eleven o'clock, we have a conference call with Mr. Ferron and Dave and Mr. Stoker. They're not available.
Tomorrow.
Eleven o'clock.
Tomorrow.
Okay. So we'll get that, at least we'll get that part. It's not a gutsy part of it, but you need to.
Yeah, absolutely.
We all need to know.
Yep. That's all I have. John?
I want to remind everybody, there's a board of public works meeting prior to our road commission meeting next Tuesday. We're gonna have a presentation, I think, from the Northport people by Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Eleven o'clock.
We're required to have them, by the board of commissioners, once a year, they're supposed to, or twice a year, they're supposed to give us verbal presentations. If you wanna see where they're, if you've been following it.
John?
No, I'm good. Thanks, Chuck. I appreciate what you're stepping up here to the plate and helping us through this.
It's a tough, it's a tough issue.
Steve?
No, I'm good. Thanks, Chet and John, for being here.
Yes, thank you, John. With that, meeting adjourned.